Yeah, that's right.
All right, so we're good? Yep. So it's two o'clock and we'll go ahead and start the workshop. Um, in attendance, we have Carol, Doug, Flavia, Ed, and Bob. And I will start, I guess you all received the email from Chelsea yesterday regarding the four topics for today?
Yes.
And we are in agreement, we can just start that in the order.
It's a little warm in here.
It is.
You get warmer.
Chelsea, do you want to do an overview and explanation of your email and then have us ask you questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
In front of me.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. You got it?
Bob gave it to me, yep. Okay. So you all received an email yesterday with regards to four large topics of discussion for the workshop. Um, that I thought would be prudent for us to discuss. Uh, number one being the administration building, number two being the park improvements, number three being stormwater system cleaning, and number four being sewer cleaning. Um, these are all three, or all four large ticket items that impact on the various funds. Um, I don't know if you want me to just go one by one, Flavia?
Yes.
Okay. So with the with the 2023 um bond series, the um at the time, we took out $3.6 million for the administrative building because at the time, that was the estimated cost from the engineer. Um, at the hundred percent design for the EOPC for the administration building, we're looking at closer to $5 million plus additional CEI. So there will, if the bids come in at the engineer's opinion of probable cost, uh, there will be a shortfall. So in the email I sent to you is the estimated shortfall in that broken down per fund, fifty-nine percent to utilities, fourteen percent to the general fund, or I'm sorry, to Pelican and twenty-seven percent to the general fund. And there are suggestions as to where that funding would come from. Um, Pelican could either assess it as part of their 2025 projected budget or out of reserves. The general fund could do it out of reserves. The bond assessments or combination of any of those three. And then the enterprise fund, we need to include as part of the rate study assessment that is currently being done. I will pause.
And Pelican's part is approximately $265,480, is that correct?
If that's what's in my email, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That is the fourteen percent of the delta that we anticipate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they obviously have reserves that they could draw on and float out.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, the part from the utilities, the 1,118810. Are there sufficient reserves in the utilities to draw?
Yes, there is. But we need to incorporate that as part of the rate study to re- to recoup those funds and rebuild the reserves.
And the um 511,000? 512,000 for the general fund. What kind of reserves does the general fund have? Is it possible to draw on those or not?
Yes, but my recommendation is for us to take a combination of the bond proceeds and that administrative section of the bond because we have to stay within that category.
Right.
As well as carry forward, which we're waiting for the audited number, but the preliminary unaudited number that I received from Stephen Bloom was a little over 700,000 for 2023. Carry forward last year's because we don't have the audit done yet.
Oh, okay. And how much, I'm sorry.
Approximately 700,000 is the unaudited. I have a email into him to confirm if that's general fund or split across the different funds.
Okay. So for Pelican to basically not have this on our assessment, which will raise the assessment, obviously, for one, basically a one-time charge. What do you need from P-PAC?
Recommendation how they, how they would wish to fund this, if from reserves in current year. Or to put it on the assessment, there is no additional funding available in the Pelican bond, in the 2023 Pelican bond for them to draw on.
Other than the number that was originally put in.
Correct.
For the administrative building.
Correct.
Could we have an agenda item on P-PAC's next uh meeting, which would be in June? Uh, asking them um which, what they prefer to do, pay out of reserves or levy?
Absolutely.
And that was offered, Carol, when the building was first proposed. We, that was one of the scenarios.
Right.
That was offered. Thought it was only two and a half million, but.
I remember voting for paying it and
Yeah.
everybody else voted to levy.
Well, then it's down to the question of if, if you paid it today, everybody else benefits in the future and they don't pay. If you stretch it out.
You mean if you bonded?
No, they, they could take it out of the reserves, it's paying, they not have the, the bond cost.
When, when the bonds were originally proposed, uh, Pelican could have just paid its amount. We had enough in reserves. We could have just paid the whole thing. Any.
So just take cash.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is what you're talking about on the O-O one account.
So you're asking for the difference now to go back to P-PAC and ask them if they want to pay it out of reserves or if they want to levy. Uh, but when it goes on the levy, that's going to be a substantial hit. I mean, it's um.
Can't be more than a hundred bucks. Boy, you know.
Twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred into 250,000 uh.
Hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks?
Hundred bucks.
You really want your taxes to go up by a hundred?
Oh, I don't want them to go up a nickel, but I'm saying, you know, but it's also difficult to, and this is their decision.
The reason why we should at least ask the question.
Totally agree.
I already have it as mine and the budget that I need to discuss with them about some of the ways that they want to fund other projects, so that's already on there.
Okay. Then with the utilities, um, is there? Are, are they going to be, is this included in their levy also because it's included in their budget?
They don't have a levy. They just have a rate.
A bill.
It's a rate. It's, the, the fact is that theirs was fifty-nine percent of this 1.9 million.
Right.
That, that's cash. They have to come up with cash. You got to pay the contractor. So either they bond it or we have a one-time assessment in the rates, which across the board is a increase in the monthly, not the, the usage, the base rate. And it will be a sticker shock.
Yes, I understand. That's why I'm asking.
There are no choices.
Their reserves?
Yes.
In utilities that could be drawn on or?
Yes, but it's, the, the reserves are very low as of right now because we, because of the two roundabouts where it wasn't anticipated um to bond those projects at the time with my predecessor.
Then do you have any kind of a recommendation as to how utilities would pay their part?
We, well, I mean, we're still out to bid, so it needs to be incorporated as part of the rate assessment and the rate assessment needs to be implemented sooner than later. But there is, I mean, we can, we can talk different options. One of the questions that we have, which we have to confirm with legal, is if we can use connection fees. So that is something that we have to follow up because we have a little over $2 million in connection fees. That is restricted act, restricted use funds.
I'm sorry for my ignorance, connection fees.
Anytime somebody um does a new tie into our utility system, they have to pay a connection fee. So it's, it's a one-time fee that they pay.
They really buy a house.
Yeah.
Oh, when you buy your house?
When you.
When you, when you have a new house, you, you have to read the search.
Or if you go, whenever you go to something.
Oh, when you have a brand new house?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not when two people.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if you take the utility side and pay it as cash at fifty-nine percent of 1.8 million, which is now the differential.
Yeah.
That comes out to be about, based on sixty-six hundred users, about a hundred and sixty dollars a year. So every two months, divide that by six, they're going to have about a $25 base rate surcharge, which is more than double what they got right now. And that'll be a one-year payoff.
So it's, they'll drop a year from now?
Yeah, because you're paying cash. There's no bonding.
Yeah. So that's, that is that number we're conveying to Raftellis to incorporate as part of the rate study evaluation, which we'll come back to you guys June, June sixth.
Oh, the same day we're voting on the budget. And that's, so that money will be in there.
Will be part of the rate analysis to increase the rate, yes.
Yeah, the, the, the rate O-O four account has to like Pelican bring to the table that 1.06 million. Somehow, some way.
The 400 account.
What did I say? Four oh oh, four oh oh, okay. The utility account, the utility count and the Pelican preserve accounts both have to bring in cash equal to fifty-nine plus fourteen, seventy-three percent of right now, 1.8 million in cash.
Now, if the bit, if the bids come in less, it's less.
Do what?
I understand that, and that's why I'm asking these questions. Is there sufficient cash there to do it?
It has to be.
We're just burning up a tree that has no money in.
It's got to be done.
So your recommendation for the utility side of it is to put it in with the rate study, raise the rates and then
Address.
Move forward.
Yes.
Okay, once we raise the rates, do we ever reduce the rates?
You can. It's up to you.
Let's see if Phil's freezing over.
Anything, once he's out, they're like, they're accustomed.
But, but I think, to Carol's point, if it's paid for within how many months, how many payments?
I just, with that situation, a year.
Okay, so you're now, you'd expect you get a $25 reduction.
Yeah, which the rates that will come in front of you are five, are anticipated five-year rates. Five-year, five years.
It'll be a one-time flip.
So you could see, you would be able to see the, the increase for the upcoming year and then if you, if you so chose, you could choose to reduce it. Years two, three, four, and five, depending on um capital projects for the.
Almost, I never see it go back down.
But you can, but you can actually adopt the rate schedule that has a higher rate for one year that drops back down.
Yeah.
Years two, three.
Yes.
That's, that's what you, that's what you would do. It'd be a one-year surcharge.
If the board's concerned about giving that assurance to the community.
Yep.
And we can do that, right, Tony?
Uh, yes, to pay for proportionate share. That's the key issue is for the services or facilities. Uh, that's what it's helping to fund. I was just going to pull up the schedule and charge the shares.
And again.
Okay, so thank you. I feel better now about funding this administrative building.
We're still, we're going to talk with Tony about the use of connection fees if there, if, if we could use those for the admin, the delta of the admin, um, and if that is favorable, then we can.
Because legislation has changed on that, so it makes it a little more interesting.
Yeah.
That's why we had the conversation with Raftellis and Chelsea to talk about whether that's possible or not.
Do we feel that's, it's, the potential is, is there based on the?
I gotta talk. It's still a no.
Still a no.
Yeah.
What kind of money is in that account that would be available? Because that's typically goes to capital reserve.
Over two million.
Over two million.
Yeah. Yeah, some.
Is, is there any state statute where a utility can only have a certain amount of reserves? A certain percentage or a certain?
No.
No?
Not, not. Not, not the, not the district operating as utility. There may be some regulatory schemes for those utilities governed by the Public Service Commission, which we are not.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a separate.
So my point was if our reserves are low, if you included it in, in the rate schedule and kept that rate schedule for five, for four years, you would build up a reserve account
We would rebuild.
in your utilities.
Yes, we would rebuild it.
And for the long-term benefit is for the district, shh, should we be looking to do that or not?
We absolutely need to rebuild the reserves.
That's where it gets argumentative. Those that are here, there are elderly people are saying.
You know.
No, no, hell no. So it, it's, it's one of those issues. It's very, 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 very controversial.
We have to do what's right.
You got to do what's right, and there are all kinds of information about the literature of what is the suggested recommended way to do these reserves.
Well, we had a capital reserve study done last year by Raftellis that recommended a certain percentage amount to be in our capital reserves. And so we, is our goal to get to that um and, and maintain that. So because we've depleted it for the roundabouts, we need to rebuild that.
And I think we had talked last year, specifically when we were talking about Stony Brook, that we think a reasonable uh philosophy on that is to um build a reserves so your people today are paying for things in the future, but also um do an assessment as well. I think that's kind of where we landed last year was, you know, how, how do we take the burden and spread it out a little bit so it, so it makes sense? So it's not one group is carrying all the, all the particular burden.
So ultimately, that is the synopsis of where we're at with the admin building. Again, this is all contention upon us receiving and opening bids and getting the final through bid numbers.
And so that will be at our next meeting also. The Raftellis.
Oh, the Raftellis, yes. Raftellis will be coming back.
And so one of you is going to present what the rates should be.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Keep it, keep in mind of what we're giving Raftellis is still preliminary.
Yes.
We haven't given them the numbers yet, what the final is.
Because we don't know.
We can give them by now. We're, we're operating here on projections until we get the bids.
Yeah. And that's the same with the budget. We're doing the same thing with the budget. We're projecting based on the engineer's opinion of probable cost.
Yeah, the, I, I, we going on this before we go to the next one?
No, I want to finish, I want to finish this and then.
Okay, good. Well, I had, I had something still for this.
Okay, then go ahead.
I want to make sure that we're all on the same page because I just found out within the last week that I wasn't aware, should have been, but wasn't, that we had three quarters of a million dollars carryover from last year. That was a little shocker. Pleasant shocker. I think we need to have a real discussion of how, and this is O-O one, so it's not you guys, uh, and not in uh utilities. This is purely for assessments. We do one of two things. We take and use that money to downpay our pro-rata share, which is about estimated 510, 520,000 dollars, which will leave us $200,000 of excess cash to make decision on how we want to spend that, buy down rates, whatever we want to do, pay for storm sewers, whatever. But I think we need, before we go any further, I have an understanding of how we are going to pay for this. The last thing I want to do is going, going out and doing additional bonding, because right now we're at 3.6 million. And to go back and get more, we pay up additional bond fees, we pay up additional uh, uh, bond coverage costs. And what would be 1.8 million dollars turns out to be 2.8 million when you get done screwing around with it. So we've got the ability to pay the cash of our share. It looks to me that the best way of doing it is taking the pro-rata share within reason and hoping that within reason is the 550 and use that 750 to pay.
Yeah, and I think that's something, we, we've, we've had this conversation for numerous years. Um, and I think we've just gotten comfortable with there being, I'm going to call it a carryover at this point. Um, uh, from one year to the next, and it's been around 300, 400,000, give or take. Um, and, and that's normally those are projects that just were unrealized for various reasons. It could be we pushed the ponds a little bit because we had more rain or sequencing didn't allow certain things. Laura, I would love for us to get in some type of habit of doing, and we might be doing this on a light scale, um, but having reviews at different times during the year, um, where we can look at where we at in, in regards to uh, projects, scheduling and budget. And when we get to a point where, let's say, we're in Q four, uh, or even somewhere in Q three, where we know there's projects that will not be realized. Um, so we can have conversations on either pulling priorities forward or reallocating or knowing, having a more reasonable understanding of what that, that, that amount might be going into budgeting season. Because we always seem to come down to the wire where Stephen will say, oh, and by the way, we have a potential carrier. Actually, we have to push him on that because he very rarely will he open, will he open up and say, because I don't have that number yet, it's, you know, I don't know what it is. But I know I was always, you know, kind of taught to manage to plus or minus three, three percent. If, and I would get my hand slapped either way. So if I came in over budget, hand slap, under budget, hand slap, because that's money that could have been reallocated in other areas. I think that's the point that you're getting to is we, you know, it's great that we've got this money, but we should know ahead of time so we can either pull stuff forward or start incorporating the budgeting process. Because, you know, it's, budgeting is, is a very difficult thing when we've got so many things that we're trying to get done.
Well, the timing this time just so happened to work.
Yeah.
To allow us to do it. I went back, checked my notes this morning, and from last year, we had a discussion of that, this in late July, according to my notes, and that Stephen had given, given us at that time, like he always does, he gave us the range. And the range that he gave us at that time was three to five. It seems like we're always three to five.
Yeah.
That, that's safe ground, hallowed ground. Well, I never thought about it after October and the end of November and December of, hey, what did we end up with?
I don't remember him, I don't remember Stephen. I don't remember him talking about.
In July, he was telling us, and it was very off the cuff.
Yeah.
Three to five.
Yeah, because we probably asked, how much are you expecting for us to have carrier?
The issue is, is that I certainly didn't. I don't think anybody else did because I couldn't find it in any minutes.
I don't recall.
We, we, we just didn't talk about it again. And then all of a sudden, well, we have a, we have a surprise here. But it can work out to at least get that building component of this deal out of our hair, because right now I think it's in our hair and tangled. We've got to figure a way of getting it out.
And to that point, you know, we heard we're still in audit, took Carol says, you know, every time I ask, every time we ask, I ask just as of Tuesday, I asked Stephen, I was like, where are we at with carry forward? Tuesday was the first news of the 720 or 750, 750, which we just received.
So you just saw an email confirmation, a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, we need to have a stake in the ground on that. Like, I, I know there's a process.
I think you're almost done with the auditors, right?
Yeah.
It was the, the transition of the accounting system last year, kind of threw a wrench in it because the auditors didn't have, they needed some training on how to get in to look at the stuff that they're used to looking at in the other system. So half was in the other system, half was in the new system. So next year should be a little.
We're almost. I'm sure, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's valid, but what I'd say moving forward is we need to set a standard that we need to have the audit complete so we know what that amount is by X date. Um, and just, you know.
Add that as part, add that as part of the contract.
Part of the contract.
Yeah.
Because we have to have that information or else we're operating blind.
I think six months is way enough time.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. Um, we.
I'd like four, but.
You mean on the audit?
Yes.
Yeah.
Welcome to Gateway. It's been that away for 15 years. It happens every year.
It's like nine months and really didn't.
Well, we set that standard.
Six months is March and this is May.
They do it all the time.
Yeah.
Every year.
We, well, we, we put it to Laura's point, we put it in the contract and we hold, you know, we hold the vendor accountable for that, period.
We, we normally have most of the invoices and expected charges for the fiscal year in by the end of November, like mid to late November. So I mean, I can run an unofficial seven financials once that stuff is all in. Again, completely unofficial, we always on the making adjustments. Normally they're not large, but we'd have a ballpark idea or whatever.
And I think that's what we should do. We should have, here's the first initial assessment, and that's going to be plus or minus whatever our confidence level on that. If it's 70%, fine. At least it gives us a starting point, knowing that within a certain date that we define, we will have that actual true number.
So I have four big topics of discussion for this workshop I was hoping to get through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything else for the admin that you wanted to discuss?
So we're in better shape there than we thought we were.
Yes.
Okay.
Any, anything else?
And then do we want it, well, I know we cannot do it now in the workshop, but is that something that we want to bring up during the meeting that we're going to go ahead and have?
The funding source.
Or whatever amount, I mean, I'm good with 550, I'm good for that, it was a determined amount, but that's what it's coming from?
Yep, so we place some placeholder, we put some placeholders in the budget. Um, we just need to know the use of funds. So if you want to use a portion of carry forward or a portion of bonds, that's, that's what we need to know from this board and P-PAC if you, if you want us to push it back down to P-PAC.
Yeah, I think.
I do.
That, that's our bigger issue is, is that P-PAC knows that they got about a quarter of a million that they got to get us to, get to us in cash. And uh, our financial advisor, Ray, has to understand, he's, he's got to make in, make in a lot of money, like 1.1 million.
So we'll need direction in the regular session on how you'd like to proceed on those.
Okay.
All right.
And, and the other thing on that is those bills come in every two months. That million has to be upfront.
Whenever we started.
Whenever we start that work, that money's got to be upfront. We, we got to generate it, so we're probably going to have to go to a bank and get a construction loan or something to make up that difference. These contractors.
Or do you think we'll have it?
Who's going to pay the contractor? Ain't no money.
But they're saying we haven't reserves. We can pull it from reserves and then.
You want to do it that way? You want to do it that way?
Any, just one thing to keep track of.
Risky.
When we send the notices out for the public hearing and the assessments and the budget, if you're changing the use of the funds from what it was originally collected for, then you need to do the mailed notice and the big add in the paper. So that's one of the statutes where.
You talking about the reserves?
Yes.
Do, do you know, um, it's just, because I'm curious, do you know, uh, or I don't know if Stephen's on, what the going uh rate is right now for construction loan?
For construction loan, short loan, I have no idea. I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood, five, six percent.
The uh, one of my other districts has gotten some notice.
Oh, really?
It's really good at giving short-term notes and borrow like 500,000 at a time, 550 River Ridge, Stony Brook, and it's about five, 5.6.
Okay.
And their fee, and the nice part is their attorney has the documents down pat. It's a 12.5 attorney fee for them, uh, and they've been, it's Jim Mitchell.
Pay ourselves back.
That, if you want to contact with him, I, I can put you in contact with Jim.
Well, we'll.
12,500.
Depending on what the fourth world's charges.
Plus points.
All right, so anything else for the admin building?
Now.
Moving, moving on to, do you want to go to the park next?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this board has given direction for us to proceed with site work, site work to include that into the current bid that is out there for the, with the admin building for site work of up to phase two B for the park stuff. So that is, that was added via an addendum. We are.
Laura, can you pull up what? What we're referencing?
It's an email.
It's, it's this, yeah, it's this chart right here.
No, I have the email pulled up, but I'm just saying it would probably be helpful if we could see if they're pulling up the, is it the addendum you're looking at, the Excel?
Pardon? Oh.
If you want the emails pulled up or you want the?
No.
Oh. Look, I, I'd pull up the one that, uh, the opinion of cost that the architect and engineer gave us that shows the three, 2.9 million.
That one, that, so. Should be it.
Just that way, if we know what you're looking at, we can follow along in person stuff.
To, you're talking the Stephen Bloom one?
I think this one was prepared by uh Tetra Tech.
I don't, that's not in that.
This is the one that shows the two.
Yeah, that.
Two million, 500,000 dollars construction cost of the phase one A and B park plus the 397.5 paid out in current non-construction costs.
That was in a previous, I'll have to find that email and send, and send that. That's not what, what was in attachment yesterday's.
Well, it's on this attachment. It's just not.
Oh, is it?
All I'm saying, if you're refer, if you're referencing numbers, if you've got something corresponding, I would just pull.
No, it's not. Go to the, open the Excel.
If you've got this attachment that came out, I think Chelsea sent.
Click on.
It refers to 2,511 construction cost under the project cost column. This deal, this breakdown that was given to us by our engineer is when you add these two together, that's 2,500,000. So the, 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 the number is, is as good as we have right now until we can take bids.
All right. I don't, I don't have that document ra- readily available. That was sent, that was sent, what, weeks ago when we got the original estimates from?
I don't know.
Um, Tetra Tech and Homantas, but.
We just have this.
Even if you have the, the face too.
We can do that.
Just so we can make sure we're all looking at the same thing.
Go to off numbers. And pull that over. Okay.
Yeah.
So working with Tech, Tech and Homantas, we've got the estimated cost for um, for everything up through phase two B, which includes amenities, which includes um, the vertical construction, underground construction, et cetera. Um, Tetra Tech broke it out um, with the different phases of the admin building that we, because of the funding source being different, uh, they were able to separate those costs accordingly. That way we could track them. So like, anything park, directly park related, that would come out of the Parks and Rec Fund. The admin building is split across the three funds, et cetera. So um, what we did was uh, we put together the O and M costs, the capital costs, um, the, the construction cost and the soft costs. Um, Stephen Bloom provided this workbook. Um, essentially, there are two options here. One is to subsidize with the carry forward and then the second option is to uh, use bond, additional bond funding that you have available.
Stop that. The carry forward that you're talking about, it's not, it's what you and I talked about. It's not really carry forward because it's 2024.
Correct.
Project, so.
So the carry forward number are projects that we, and, and that number, we're in, we're in the middle of the year. That number's going to fluctuate, but those are identified projects that, like for instance, the Dog Park to Fun Park move.
Unrealized items.
Exactly what you were saying earlier about identifying projects that weren't, we weren't going to do.
That, that's, we got to watch that term though, is, is items that we have identified previously that have a need, we just haven't committed them yet.
Yes.
So we're, we're reshuffling.
Yeah.
And what I, I'd like to see is I'd like to see a breakdown of the 729, 875, the items that make that up, so we know what's at play here.
Yeah, I, the terminology that I would probably use is that these are unrealized projects or reprioritized, you know, some follow those terms. Because we may not, we may do them in a year, we may de-prioritize them like we have the dog park in some, some areas.
The worst thing is, is that monies have been expended or monies have been reserved and we've went before the, the community last year. Keep in mind, we took some heat over the fact that what we're doing is basically playing games with money and making a wish list, not a needs list. We start shuffling this and it's going to look more and more that that is the case. What we need to do is we need to have a, an agreement that we are stepping back. Re-examining this based upon the park, that some of the things that were short-term now are long-term. Some of the things that we were going to do, like the splash pad, which was three quarters of a million dollars is gone. We terminated. So there's, there's three quarters of a million bucks we picked up right off the bat. I think we have the prerogative to make that decision. That thing is dynamic as hell on a capital reserve study. It's not static, changes every year. And I think we have the authority to do that. But I think we need to know specifically what are those seven twenty-nine items are going out. And that dog park will be one that will be very controversial because a lot of people go say, hey, don't take out my dog park.
Go ahead.
So then I, I passed it on to you guys. I wanted to, I did talk to Chelsea regarding what, and then Daniel as well. Regarding what we, we kind of discussed and I just want to make sure I'm also right. So the document that I gave you guys, the items that are highlighted.
Bobby, can you pass on the next one down that way?
Okay, so those are, like, so if we add all that, that's how we sum up with it, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Now, I'm going to crap yacht with, we've already spent some of the money on the highlighted one that we've already identified. So we're down to.
Daniel, so originally it was seven twenty-nine, but then when I had a conversation with Daniel, I was like, Daniel, is this the accurate number? Because you know, the financials are not done. So there's some, you know, lingering items. So we this, we took that out. So it's, it's, it's seven hundred thousand. But what I wanted to talk to you guys about is most of the items is what we talked about, like, or the parks committee and say, we're not doing this. Like the fun park, we all agree that we're not going to do anything to the fun park besides getting what's done, the hedge. So if we're not going to do that, those victory garden, which is like such a small amount, they're not going to be used because we're not making that. Late in the future, five years down the road, maybe, we don't know. So those are the items that make up the seven hundred thousand. I do want us to look at it and see if there's anything that's there that you guys want, do you like, no, let's go ahead and try to get this done in twenty twenty-three? Or let's add more items. So that's the.
Anything in the purple that you feel. Yeah, you should really try and get it done this year.
I wouldn't fiddle around with anything less than ten thousand dollars. It just, that, that's waste time. We're looking at big ticket items. We got to get to big ticket number. So I, I'd say ten thousand dollars. Concentrate on those. And I think this looks like a pretty good delineation of the items. I, I don't understand why we omitted the parks and rec fields and amenities. What is that?
That is part of the bond and that would, um, that, part of that money would go towards the, uh, soccer parking lot.
So this has nothing to do with the, uh, Commons Park? It is not a cost that's going to go to the Commons Park.
Correct.
And what if?
So you are expecting, I did talk to Danny, we are expecting to spend at least fifty thousand dollars during the summer and everything else on the fields. Because again, the fields are not getting duplicated at the commons. So that money needs to be utilized here. And if we have extra, that's great, but it's something that we're not putting it over there. Yes.
So we're saying that do we truly need a combination of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred for Sherman Parking? And one fifty, is that a, I'm trying to squeeze numbers here. Is two fifty needed or do we only need two hundred?
For what? I'm sorry.
I think it's going to be more. When I talk to Daniel, the parking lot is going to be, it's going to be way more than a hundred thousand.
And some of the two line items that are additional parking. Which is number one at a hundred K. And then further down where it says Parks and Rec Field and amenities.
The hundred thousand you guys put in as part of O and M last year, and we had a hundred and fifty thousand as part of the bond. More.
So what I'm hearing is that two fifty.
And then what is the, um, where it says playground equipment, what?
That was for the playground equipment you purchased, you approved for purchase at the commons. But we needed to move about thirty thousand dollars because.
We had a hundred and I think the total was one twenty.
So if playground equipment is in this parks deal here.
You're cutting it off. It, we're not, and that's the conversation that we need to have it now. Like, we're not going to add another one because we already bought it and paid for it. We're just going to install it there. So that's definitely needs to come out of this.
If there's where I, I got a little concerned and Chelsea and I talked a little bit about it. I don't have a real warm and fuzzy feeling about these park costs. First of all, long range, they still got that splash pond in here for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have two paddleball courts at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's in what we're building, plant. I think we need to really get these numbers home down to find out just what we have to do on this park. But my issue is, is two point five one one million, is it accurate or not? It's what these totals are. But we're already seeing stuff is being dropped out. So the issue is, is maybe the left hand or right hand aren't talking. The engineer and the architect are thinking these things are in when in fact they aren't.
What, what specifically, which one are you talking about? Because there's up, up through two B, which is everything that you've approved. And that future was just plugging in numbers. We have no idea with that. So we're, the hard numbers?
The futures, the futures off the table. We're talking about these, no, phase one's the building. Phase two and two A and B are the park. That's the, the one we did last week or two weeks ago, and then the addendum we did two weeks ago to throw in the two B. And that is showing a two point nine million. But of that going back into the two A is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for paddleball. I'm of the opinion that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for two paddleball courts is a joke. It's, it's got to be a joke. That is outlandish amount of money. So I guess my question is, this isn't correct.
Because I don't recall us ever, okay, so Chelsea and I talked about that and I don't know if that came from Frack or not, but I don't recall us ever talking about paddleball courts. And then Chelsea goes, if you don't want to cut it off, I remember, well, I know that, but I, I remember talking about pickleball. Basketball.
Here's the.
Paddleball was one that it's, it's one, it's, um, it's what we consider maybe an, an emerging sport. That will be the next phase of pickleball. So if we want to get, get ahead of that, it's something we could put in. If we are trying to maintain budget, you know, it's.
Here, here's my issue Doug on this is where I'm a little bit concerned as to where the numbers generated. Twelve pickleball courts at fifteen seven each. You can't touch a pickleball court for fifteen seven. It's double that.
Had we received quotes? I have an innovative quote for he, that'd be more than.
It, it's got to look like something that would, the country club was almost forty thousand dollars. And I'm assuming that people want something that's similar of that quality. But anyway, my point is, is that where I think the paddleball courts are grossly overestimated, I think the pickleball courts is grossly underestimated. My whole thing is, is that.
And the quotes that you got are in line with this?
Those, that's how we filled the numbers.
We can go by this two ways. One, we say these, these are the amenities, amenities that we want. And then we'll.
We bid them. And then we see.
But, but my other point is, or we say, okay, this is what we are comfortable with spending. We've got X amount coming from these funding sources. This amount is going to come through assessments. This is what we're comfortable with. Uh, what can we get for that? So it could be, it could be ten pickleball courts at the end of the day with earmarked for four down the road or whatever, because we have to back into budget.
If the bids come in low, then we might swallow a little bit more than.
We can keep paddleball on the, on the, on the table, but if we exceed that budget, something's got to be cut. Either we cut pickleball, we cut basketball, or we cut something. We have to maintain within a budget.
I think that's where we're at.
The bidding of those amenities will come at a future date. Right now, we're focused on site work. And with those anticipated amenities, being there and making sure we account for the utilities, the drainage, all of it.
Site work for that, but.
I mean, ultimately what our job is, our job is to give you priorities and budget. It's your job to execute within that budget. And if you come back and say, hey, the budget that we're under and what your priorities were, we are going to be short. We either need to find additional funding to, for two additional, for the two additional pickleball courts, or we're going to scale them back or paddleball, whatever. Like, that's what we should be. Priorities and budget, their job to execute.
Well, keep in mind though, what we've done is because of some of this permitting stuff and those things that are going on right now that are very active with the county. That got ugly today. Is, is that if we do the site work, you're probably going to be looking at two fifty, two eighty, maybe three hundred thousand dollars. Of what we're going to be dealing with on hand, that we know factual, because we're going to bid it. These other things are going to be coming in over a period of maybe the next, what, three, six, nine months for the rest of the park.
Okay, so.
All the actual amenities.
That would be a separate bid we'd have to put out.
Understand that, but it's not going to be in this next three to six month period. You're looking at back into twenty twenty-five. So we just live with that. And we hope the engineer's estimates is, is pretty accurate. But at the point right now, our big deal is to get past this, uh, uh, initial bid. With these two bid items. One, unless Bob and all the people over there in Kelly want to help us pay for it, we'll just blend it all in the building.
Not today.
Not today? Damn, I thought I'd tried. But we got to keep those costs separate, that's my point.
So in the bond. You had, uh, six million fifty thousand, something over there. And then you say that leaves five point five million left. Meaning there is sufficient money.
Let me, let me explain.
It, well, if in twenty twenty-five, we're only going to do site work. We're not going to actually put the racket ball court or the pickleball courts out there and whatever. But we're going to do all the site work and do all, all the infrastructure.
We may do both.
To put it in, but let's just say for twen- twenty twenty-five, do we have sufficient money in the bond to pay for that?
No.
Way short.
Are we?
If the three hundred thousand dollar number, you, we have about a hundred and fifty left out of the bond. Um, a hundred and fifty, but so we, that's where we talk about the multiple funding sources. We've got three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in park impact fees. From the county that we could dip into.
About one point three million if you look at this option.
So in that, that six million dollar number you, you mentioned, that was the validated amount. We only actually borrowed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that six point oh five million. So if you have the option to take out an additional bond series, if you so chose for that one specific Gateway Commons project. Or add additional from the original master engineer's report, add, add additional projects. Later we're talking about storm, storm water. That, that's another option.
So the twenty twenty-six budget would probably be the first time, which starts October first of twenty twenty-five. Would be the first time that you would anticipate actually putting the courts in.
It all depends on the admin building bid, truthfully. If we delay the, the opening of that bid until the end of this year, that could delay.
Even further.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so leaving off the actual courts, the actual, the actual physical thing. But doing all the infrastructure to put it in, we still don't have enough money in the bonds?
Between the.
You've got six points some odd million.
We'd have to take out an additional bond series.
There was, there was a total amount validated of fifty-five million dollars. And the first bond series was much less than that to do the first phase of projects. And so there was, there were, there were estimated project costs for a number of projects that went into the total bond validation of fifty-five. But only one loan has been taken out today. We'll call it one bond series has been issued. So I think that Chelsea's saying we can take, issue another bond series of the fifty-five million total to fund.
But the.
There's bond money.
The example I gave, your credit limit is six million. You bought something for five hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So if you want to use more of that six million credit limit, you got to ask. That's essentially what.
Was maybe a little confusing. We could use the bond money, but we have to issue another series.
And there's costs associated that bond comes. Underwriter fees.
So this isn't another bond issue. This is just, just taking a part of it and.
No, it's a bond series.
It's not like a, um, line of equity credit that you can just say, hey, I need, I have, uh, I've been approved for two hundred thousand line of credit. I could take out fifty here, fifty there, fifty there. It's a little bit more of a process. So it's like you've been pre-approved, but you have to go through hoops in order to get the realization.
Now, we could afford the site work alone between the bond, the existing bond series and the park, park impact fees.
Okay, park impact and the existing bonds without doing another series or anything.
That would only pay for your site.
Only pay for the site work.
You would not get any vertical improvements.
This, this option one that Steve gave us.
So then in twenty-six, you'd have to look to do one of these.
Or sooner, yeah.
Or sooner.
Or sooner, depending on how.
That process takes a while.
But for this year's budget, you do have money in your bonds to at least do the site.
Subsidized by additional funding sources, yes.
We can fund it. Through multiple sources.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
What were you saying, Ed?
The engineer.
Yeah, because I do have questions on that.
I think the, the issue is on the option one Steve's trying to point out, looking at the big picture of the whole thing. With not making any decision to cut back or change it with the numbers that we got that the engineer has given us. What he's saying is you're short one point two four six million.
Yeah, but Ed, what I'm saying is, I'm thinking that you're going to have to push that off to the next budget year.
Maybe, maybe not.
Twenty-six.
It really depends on when we get started on this.
It, it depends on, first of all, we got to do the survey to find out what the community's deal is on this to, to begin with. But assuming that that is good.
Rather than levying for it this year, don't you think people would rather just have us do the site work? And get it all ready and then levy in twenty-six?
Well, you got others in the last question, why are you doing the site work if you're not going to build anything?
The sheet that Ed's looking at was sent to you a couple of weeks ago. It was called the Order of Magnitude.
That's Georgia printed that for you.
Yeah, so just that, that document you do have, Laura can read some to you now if you guys would like.
I think that would be great because I, there are some things that I do have questions because I'm looking at ads and I just don't recall, I, I don't recall some of the items are there.
And to be or in future?
Two A.
Both. I think, I just think that what needs to be done.
Oh, I know, but that's why I said she can print it.
Yeah, Laura's not trying to print it.
What needs to be done is, is that we need to coordinate with what we told Chelsea at the last meeting with our engineer. Because I think the word didn't get back to him, some of this stuff's dropped out. Because right now, he's at twelve point nine million dollars.
Wow, okay.
Combination of building and total park, twelve point nine million.
But I think sometimes we just need, we're going to do it, but we're just going to have to look at twenty-six, twenty-seven.
The problem I'm having right now from what the engineers told me today is that we have got to get around this damn permit issue. We got a real issue with that county. They're being horse's asses down there. They will not take, they will not take a D O now from our engineer. Just, it's getting, this is absurd what they're doing.
So ultimately what Ed's alluding to, which was, we all, Ed and I both found out today, because we both emailed the, the engineer asking for an update was, um, basically. An engineer doesn't want to take over another engineer's work. You can only have one, one record, one owner of record for engineering. So either Grady Minor who did the admin building needs to take over and incorporate Homantas's design or vice versa. And so we've got to work through that issue with those engineers to see who's willing.
The county won't allow one engineer to amend another engineer's permit.
Correct.
That's the issue.
The direction that the board gave was to, to apply for the D O through two B. And so that has been the direction to Tetra Tech and Homantas to make that happen. So they've got to work through some of these hurdles, like, just like we did with the admin building. The, the, the point back to the budget and this discussion was, do you, would you like to use carry? What, what we anticipate to be with that purple sheet, carry forward money to help subsidize it? Or would you like to use a bond series?
So I, I have a, a question because I am completely naive on this, on this point. Could we not operate under two permits? Admin and then, uh, uh, the, the park site work. As kind of two separate plans, but execute them in a lateral.
That is, that is where we're, if we don't get this issue resolved.
The problem is, is the, the park improvements, the drive aisle is the issue. Because the drive aisle on the admin building was drastically altered with the park improvements. And so ultimately Homantas's design has changed Grady Minor's design. So they have to, between the engineers, they have to figure out who's going to take lead. Is Grady Minor going to tweak their design and be the owner of record confirming Homantas's work? Or is Homantas going to take over the whole, the whole design and be the owner of record? So again, this is news as of two hours ago.
And, and there is another option in my opinion. We go on ahead, we simply realize that we do not have, nor will we have a D O for that revised version of the road. You don't build the road the first thing anyway. You build construction roads and do all that. We go ahead and build a building and five months from now, six months from now. When the permit comes through in the dust. We go ahead and build a building and five months from now, six months from now, when the permit comes through and the dust settles, we build the road. Don't worry about it. They want to play that game. Two can play that game.
Problem is, you can't build, you can't build a building without a road to it.
I'm sorry?
You can't build a building without a road to it.
So we have.
So you would be.
It'd be a construction road.
Well, you would be duplicating your, your, your work, like, and that was the.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't get ourselves in a corner that this thing falls apart, that you cannot do the two together. Because that's where it's quickly headed.
And that's where the engineers are tasked to figure it out.
Okay, let's go back to funding, because I want to at least get that. So looking at what we have here.
You have an option one or two.
Well, I will, what, do we want to use that what we believe we're not gonna be spending for 2024 for parks?
Here's, I, I mean, honestly, I think we could go through this, but to be quite honest, I think staff, I mean, if this is what staff has done.
I did that.
Well, if, if.
Need staff to have direction, but it can be from me, it can be from the board. That's why I didn't know if I need to add this to my.
Well, it's pretty simple. It's like, what items do we have currently on budget that are either not gonna be realized or will be reprioritized? What is that number? Because that's what we can.
I, I, I think we're making it oversimplified. If we're going to take and essentially divide, which we've said, the amenities and everything else on the park back, the need and necessity of having that money now doesn't exist. We need to know how we're gonna do it, but it doesn't exist. What does exist now and is real is we need to have that 2,909 broken into two components. The component of the site survey and all that work that we know we're bidding and we know we're gonna do. Can, first question, can you use the impact fee as 100% grant for that? So we could take and do the upfront, that just so happens the two numbers are very close. Let's commit that we'll do the necessary work to do the site work, which is identified here on here without the amenities. And the $397,000 impact fee, let them cover that such that in that column, the net cost of that at this point in time is no additional cost. We don't have a bond, we don't have anything.
I will send an email, if that's the board direction, I need to send an email to the Lee County Parks and Rec Director and confirm. But because it is for park improvements, I am going to go on a, on the ledge and say, yes, it should be.
Chelsea, even if they say, no, it has to be 50/50, alls we do is come into the 729 and pull out 50% of it, put it over.
So, so that's.
Let's commit to what we can afford today, that we can realize.
And then have.
And everything else, let's figure it out.
Then have the second column, which right now is not that, not, not that big a time sensitivity, but could be May, April of next year, maybe a year from now. That would be the column. That would be the difference between the 2.9 and the 300,000 for the site work.
Okay, so.
And that's the one we make the plan of, we're gonna fund it with this, 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 and this.
Okay, so pay, pay with park impact fees and identify potential 2024 carry forward.
And that's what this.
I just, let's call something else. What do you have called instead of carry?
That's fine.
Okay.
Listen to carry forward.
I get it, but we get it.
Unrealized projects.
Carry forward at the 2023 and the 2024, because that I want people looking at and say, oh, you're.
Hold it, let's, yeah, let's make sure. So I thought we had that squared away. Building.
Yes, I, that's what I just don't want.
Say it one more time.
2023 carryover, retained earnings is going committed to, to the building, to the extent that it is needed to the tune of about 520,000, and the rest is undetermined.
And there's 2024 unrealized or re-prioritized items.
Correct.
Meaning, meaning the purple.
The 700.
Which is this, 24?
Yes, that's the 24.
That's the unrealized, re-prioritized items.
Okay.
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 All right, I am, I am.
That's funding for those two.
I am clear on that. We have six more minutes. You want to go into the next two?
I think the next two go very fast.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
And you're gonna do it then?
No, very fast, Ed.
Storm sewer's going back to the, to the shelf to work on. But the issue with Storm Sewer that we got to have a discussion on is, is that we have a plan, current plan, trying to do this over a five-year period. Basins 1, 2, and 3, in my opinion, which are about 833, to be exact, 833,000 dollars a bid cost, assuming we can award a bid to this guy, 833,000 dollars. Instead of telling this guy, do basin 1 in year 1, basin 2 in year 2, and basin 3 in year 3, of which is 10,000, 30,000, 800,000. Tell him you've got a contract for three years to do all three. Our deal then is just to decide, how are we gonna come up with that 833? That 833 over a three-year period, we're gonna have to do a little cash flow finagling. But if you just took it simply and divided by three, it's about $270,000 a year. We need in the O O 1 account about $271,000 a year for the next three years to get us up and have all of our storm sewers cleaned. Basins 4 and 5, we're just done. We didn't do them for 30 years. Why are we trying to rush them again in five? Let's wait a while. Enjoy it.
Wait, you want to kick the can down the road?
I want to kick the can down the road.
Yeah, and has, has 4 and 5, because we had talked about this before, Bob, has 4 and 5 been assessed? Do we know? I'm sorry.
Five, they have.
Or has 4 and 5 been assessed to understand that?
We got bids on it. My point is.
But I understand the, the.
5 was done in, in 2020, 21, and 4, we're finishing up now.
Right now. So, and typically, you do 10% every, every year, so that at the end of 10 years, you've done the entire system. So we got breathing room on 4 and 5.
Yeah.
But we don't on 1 and 2 and 3. Those are the ones we need to get done now. So my deal is just give the contract, award a contract to this guy for three years. We go and set up.
Three. We're gonna split the 800,000 also.
And, uh, and, and we set up the, the funding to somewhere in the neighborhood, 833,000 dollars. Three years, that's just an add-on to the O O 1 account, unless we talk, fell again into helping pick in some on this.
I'm all ready to help you.
Yeah, that's, so, so we're on our own. Uh, but anyway, and that's done.
So Tony, really quick, from a contract perspective, we lay out, um, this is a three-year, three-year deal for the completion of the three basins, uh, in the amount of 833, which we will pay annually in, in not to exceed 271, but or what if they get completed in year two?
So, let me, Tony.
Be a problem, because you don't have.
First of all, this, this is a scenario I've never heard.
And that's contracting, but.
Okay, I've not heard of this scenario with regards to that particular proposal and bid.
Okay.
That's not what went out on the street. That's not what, I mean, we got a number of visions.
But what did go out on the street?
I understand what went out.
We bid all three, and it's a three-year contract. Unless the contract stipulated that you can only do one in one, two in two, and three in three, I don't think it did.
Well, I, I think.
I think it said you had three.
I think how we pay, how we pay could be, I mean, that.
I think it went out that year one is basically, I think it did go out that way, year one, year two, year three.
But it, there, so this bid will be coming in front of you at your next board meeting. There, we did put in there an escalation factor if, if the contractor agreed to take.
Five.
No, no. If the contractor agreed to take on it, and we both agreed to move some of year three's work up, that we could do that. That was put in the, that was put in the bid docs. So.
Okay, so what Ed is basically saying, there's two options. We have to, uh, we have to allocate 833 as a one.
That's the bid.
One sum, which is what's currently on the street. Or we, we find a way to break this up into three increments over three years in around 271.
What are the other?
If that's possible.
It is breakdown in three different, but it's not even. It's 1030 and then, so it is broken down.
Well, I mean, honestly, I, I don't think a vendor is going to do that. I think the vendor's gonna say, look, it's a three-year deal.
I would take the.
Split it into three payments and do it that way, because there's no way I would do it the other way.
Tony, to what extent do we have, what Doug's talking basically is negotiating? To what extent do we have to prior to award of a contract to him to negotiate a.
Payment terms.
Revive, well, payment plan or a work schedule.
Work schedule is different than payment, but again, I had to go back and look at the documents as to what the flexibility is, as to what the schedule, when it was gonna be implemented upon a notice to proceed or otherwise. If we're talking about the one proposal, one bid that went out, where the vendor withdrew, try.
No, that's a different one.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Okay, it's confusing.
I was gonna say, that's confusing. Okay, uh, I had to go back and look at the bid documents. If it provided for flexibility that the schedule will be articulated at the time the contract award, I have to go back and look.
Ultimately, you have a, a, a future bid coming in front of you to the tune of about 100, 830 some thousand that will finalize your entire system storm clean, your storm system cleaning over the next three years. For budget purpose, that's the number you need to swallow.
And.
And that's what I think.
And whether we can accelerate or not, I'll look at the documents.
And would you, would you send us the email prior to the meeting? I mean, we'll reply, I promise.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, all right, Tony.
But what, what's the most important thing is when will the money be realized? Because if I'm dealing with a multi-year contract, I am going to amortize that over three years on, on my books. If I know I'm gonna have to pay sort of, now, it's one thing if we're gonna have to pay 833.
Cash flow. If, if this guy would come in and say, hey, I'm going to now do all 833 in the first year, we got a whole different ballgame.
Or, or even if he, even if he does three, we have to understand what the payment terms are, because, because we need a budget for, for whatever we're gonna spend.
Because right now, we're, we're speculating, working on assumptions.
Hold on, one other item here, one other item. We've here before, every year, budgeted so much money for storm sewer cleaning in O O 1. My question is, in 2000, last year, 20, 2024, I want to say we had 250,000. And I want to say that we were budgeting 250 a year for the next four or five years, all the way to 31.
You have, you have funding in both O O 1, the general fund, and in.
Okay, now, that's your question. Get back to your question. If that 250 is in there, and you go three years, that's 750. We're 750 already toward the 833 that has been previously done.
Based upon an annual appropriation of that.
Based on an, yes.
As opposed to accelerating.
It's always a cash flow issue.
As opposed to accelerating the schedule.
But that is in the project list, isn't it? At 250?
Yeah, do it. And, and that helps us, that helps us.
The last leg of this stool is the good news that we have realized in Pelican, once we got to 1, 2, and 3 done. We allocated 80,000 a year to maintain them on a five-year basis.
What, what happened?
We do, you know, a fifth, a fifth, a fifth, a fifth, a fifth. The actual cost now, instead of 80,000 a year, is closer to 20.
Well, this is another example of where we need to leverage best practices from Pelican. If you've already done it, we need to.
As long as you don't have a storm, a major storm, I mean, but just normal. Nice, well.
Some storm system, then sewer cleaning, you want to.